But on the flip side, there were the revenues that offset that that came in as well. And so even though that one, if you look at the actual budget to actual comparison, it looks way over budget, we did have the corresponding revenues recognized to offset. Any questions on the findings before I move on to the next areas? Okay, perfect. The, what we want to do with the rest of the slides is just give you a really brief overview of the financial position of the city, just so you can see really quickly kind of where we're at this year, that as of June 30th, the end of 2019. The first slide, and I apologize for this, that slide, as we were rushing to get everything printed, it looks like that slide did not get its update to flow through properly. So those are actually last year's numbers. The vehicles and equipment that were purchased during fiscal year 2019 were $83,000 total. So a little, just a little more than last year, they still pretty much in line. The only new building that went in was the shooting range building, and that is still a construction in progress. The total on that as of June 30th was $415,000. I believe we've got another few hundred thousand that will be coming through in fiscal year 20 as that building is completed. And then there was one other construction in progress dealing with the Almond Street project, and that one as of the end of fiscal year 2019 had $136,000 that we've expended towards that. And I apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head the total amount of that one. I believe it's several million. If, it is, okay. I apologize, I forgot about that before. The next slide, long-term liabilities, very, very similar to the previous year. In the governmental activities, the principal leases and fire restriction bonds were continued to be paid in accordance with schedule, so a total of about $57,000 there. Free compensated absences, other employment, other post-employment benefits, and net pension liability increased by about $100,000, which is right in line for what we would expect as employees are staying with the city. And then similarly with the business-type activities, again, all of the long-term debt was paid down in accordance with the scheduled payments. So a total of almost $66,000 was paid down. And then again, the compensated absences, okay, and the pension liability increased by about $78,000, $500 there. Moving on to, the next few slides are all just graphs kind of detailing some of the previous five years of the funds, just so you can get a brief overview of how each fund is looking. And I apologize for the size, it's a little hard to read. The blue line on all of these graphs is the cash balance of the fund. The red balance is the actual fund balance. And then on some of them, that, it looks like that actually changes to green, so we'll go over that as it goes through. The general fund, the fund balance decreased by about $30,000, which is, we do expect some normal fluctuation in the general fund, that's definitely not unusual. The one thing that does look a little strange at first glance is the cash balance, that blue line. There was a pretty big spike last year and then a drop at the end of this year. We're not, generally, we're not too concerned about that, just because of the timing of receivables and payables, the cash balance tends to kind of fluctuate in the general fund. We're more concerned about that fund balance, and that fund balance is now staying at a more reasonable or more consistent level after the large drop that we see from 2015 to 2016. Moving on to the other governmental funds, so this is everything other than the general fund and the utility funds, and these ones are actually looking very good, as you can see from the graph there. The fund balance for, combined for all of those other funds, has increased by $402,000 versus the prior increase was $178,000. You can see it's by far the highest point that it's been in the last couple of years. Great to see activity in those funds continuing and going well. Getting into the utility funds, the water fund cash continues to increase largely as a result of just preparing for that Almond Street project where it is such a large project, the fund needs a large cash reserve in order to handle all of the activity for that. The, in this particular graph, the green line is the unrestricted net position. The reason that this has been going down largely is because the, the total net position has been increasing, is the total cash has been increasing, the water has been restricted for like the Almond project and other projects there. So that is right in line with what we would like to see. The cash flows from operations were down a little bit this year, but again, largely a kind of timing issue dealing with receivables and that come up there. Moving on to the sanitation fund is actually relatively similar to the water fund, the cash balance has been increasing, again, in preparation for the Almond project and a few others where that project is split between the both the water and the sewer fund. And again, the, really the same comments on net position and unrestricted cash, they're very similar. With your, excuse me, with your, that's the landfill fund, again, cash is going up, as did both the unrestricted net position and the cash flows from operations of the landfill fund, even though it did have a little bit of a dip in 2017, seems to be progressing smoothly and is really very, very effective at this point. And that's really the overview that I have for you. As I said, if you have any questions, please, I'm more than willing to answer any questions as needed, or we do have our contact information on the last slide for both myself and K Hall. Please, anytime you have questions, feel free to contact us. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this? I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a second? Any other discussion? Thank you for your comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this to order. Item two, Mayor Robinson, discussion for possible actions, direction related to community economic development strategy, sets process as it relates to residency planning for the city of Ely. So this was the draft that was worked up between Pat and Mike and myself. What they needed was some outline for what real, real use plans, what we could do in the end of the loss of everything. There you go. Do they need? Jennifer, I'm just gonna disapprove of this, that one. So I will entertain a comment. Do I have a second? Do you have any discussion, if you guys would like to make that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this to order. Item three, Mayor Robinson, discussion for possible action, appointment of a Ely City Council member to serve as the liaison for regional planning committee. I went to their first meeting Wednesday, and it's a good group, and I'm excited to see what they'll do. I'm, I'll entertain any suggestions on who would like to, or who would like to throw someone under the bus and be the liaison to that.
Have a motion?
So I want to ask a question. Can Councilman Lake's request to be on this?
He requested that we put the agenda item on, and I haven't requested.
He requested he be the liaison. He didn't request to be the liaison.
Anybody? Only do you make an eye contact around Bueller.
Did Ernie, did Councilman Lake's want to hear that?
Would you like to do it, Ernie?
I've been doing it for several years, and I guess I'll continue.
I would like to nominate.
I would say.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ernie, she'll get in touch with Jennifer Drew. She'll get in touch with Jennifer Drew and go with that, she's the one who's doing it. Item four, councilwoman, meet your discussion for possible action, approval of resolution 2020 dash two, a resolution to amend the emergency medical services, emergency medical service EMS bill and rates schedule. It was, my understanding that this is just based on what the county was already charging, is that?
That's what I thought.
Is this more than what the county is charging?
Do you know, Russ, with, with the increase or the adjusted rates, does this just bring us into compliance with what the county is charging, or?
No, they just never, have, have been adjusted for a while. Which one are we talking about?
We're talking about the emergency medical services rate schedule.
They, they just haven't been adjusted for a long time since we even took you on a $50 from that.
Well, more than that.
But like the treatment, no transport, that Assessor Hill brought up.
You know, the...
Do we know what they charge in the county?
Yeah, I think there are, this is certainly more on the, on the other way, the one standard rate.
They charge more than this?
Yes, on, just different rate.
Sure.
There's one, one standard rate. What, what the intent of, the way this is spelled out was to, to interact properly with the billing system, the coverage, with the billing company, to pick it out in the line items. Right now, we know the, the basic rate is $750 per, oxygen therapy and other, other fees associated, associated with it. So you do not, I don't believe we give them the true current rate, the way this is laid out, I need to pay attention to that. But there is other fees associated with the basic all, like say if you have oxygen therapy, I can't, I can't figure what that cost is, so...
For example, what's standby time?
If you, if you, let's say we get called to BLM, said they want us to stand by, so we try to regular rate, we're out, we're trying to...
What is standby time for you guys sitting up at the, like, football game for the high schools, that standby?
That, that, yeah, that's, that's exactly what's, that is the same hourly, hourly rate.
And we haven't been charging anything in the past for that?
Football, yes, we have been. I think that's totally different, that, yes, totally different, but that's, the same rate though.
So, so are these, where did the numbers for the proposed rates come from?
This was prepared by one of the staff members that did some research for the...
Just other communities like ours, okay.
That's a similar question I have also, is, first of all, what's the basis for the increase and why? Could we, I think we need to forget about what the county did, because the county is no longer in this business, so why is there a need? And the basis, did we compare this with any other cities of our own size, and then so, where is the numbers we look at? I mean, the BL has the first line, no change. The second line, we increased it 300%, third line, 275%. I mean, dollar-wise, it's 40%, 36.7%, 53%. I've got several questions on this here, you know, the treatment, no transport, which like Burton says, well, if you go to somebody's house, they've got a severe bloody nose, they don't get, you're gonna charge them $300. 300% increase, I mean, I, I just need more explanation on every one of these increases and where they came from. And the drug, the jail transport, that's another one, we write it off, because we go to the jail, we transport, we're paying for probably nine times out of 10 times, and EMP going over there, plus something in the magistrate station, so you're looking at 130 bucks, and we don't charge the county? They charge us for everything. You know, let, you know, we charge them, and if they pay us, the city treasurer will not put that into that 27% we gotta repay them. So we have to be consistent, we can't charge some and not charge other. I don't understand what it says write off, because nobody in the sheriff, I mean, the police department, fire department has no authority to write anything off. The transport fee, you know, basic $12, advanced 20 now, it's a 32, and where, you know, I mean, that's, again, this, this transport fee, I need a better definition of, of transport fee. For example, we have a care flight, where on this listing is from the firehouse to the hospital, hospital to the airport. Where is, where is the charge for that? Is it, it's gonna have to all be, I mean, they got R N on the ambulance or the flight crew, so it's gonna be non-emergent, so it's 750, but we're gonna still charge $32 from the firehouse to the airport, that's $224, road trip's 448. And it, it just really shocks me is we give them a transport from the hospital to the airport, that care flight, not gonna charge them a dime, but we're gonna stick them with a $500 ambulance bill. And then I, if we had more statistics, I'd like to know how many percentage-wise, on all the calls we have, there's a whole book of, of stats here, how many calls are Medicare, Medicaid? Because you can charge a thousand dollars, 15,000, Medicaid, Medicare's only gonna pay 100 or 125 bucks. So what happens then, that gets wrote off, but you can bill all you want on Medicaid, Medicaid, what's the percentage, 80% of the people are Medicaid, Medicare? So what happens on that is these rates go up, you take some healthy people, they get an ambulance ride, now we're gonna charge them, you know, your insurance lender's gonna pay 200 bucks there, but you still gotta pay the whole, full load of increasing ambulance costs. So I, and almost to the point, I looked at this, this might, should be a, a public hearing, let the public know that we're the, the city fire department and the city council group raising your ambulance rates, because here we are out here in the middle of the stick, we have one ambulance service, the city dealey. You can't call nobody else but the city dealey for an ambulance service. I, I just think these costs are just, wait, there they are, I mean, why are we needing to raise them? Are we not making, the idea of this ambulance service is not to make money, it's to provide the service, but why are we, you know, 40% increase, 37%, 53%, 300% increase? I just need more numbers on what other cities can compare with. Put this here, what, where, where these numbers come from? I wanna know a little more statistics, but once again, I, I think your, your residents are not gonna like this. I think they're gonna come down, and without into the public morgue, instead of this little meeting right here, they're gonna say, wait a minute. You know, and we keep referring about the county used to charge, that county is out of business, folks, they went out of business, the ambulance service, because they were charged too much, they couldn't even afford the big red building out there, so I think we better be careful on how we wanna approach this jacking up ambulance fees. Why do we have to do it? Are we not covering the costs? I guess that'd be my main question, I think it needs to be dug in the morgue, instead of just this paper, this goes back to that same first attempt on the paramedics, not enough information, they came back with more information, went a lot smoother. Best gentleman's opinion, there's not enough information there to justify increasing these rates without more stats and why.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other discussion on this?
Any questions, comments?
Sure.
On the jail transport, I know the way, zero, but at this time, that individual gets charged.
The individual gets charged?
Yeah, the individual gets charged, it isn't, it isn't a cost to, to White Plains County. Unless, unless that inmate slips on a grease splatter or something and gets injured in the jail, then that's when the county would take it up. But yeah, there should not be a write-off on, on that type of incident, so I agree with that. As I was saying, current rates are a base rate with additional costs, like say for medications or CPR, other avenues, which it ain't fully explained, it's like, like I tried to say, it's a current rate, and we, we've probably been working on this for over eight years, so I can't remember exactly how to explain this to you, it's been that long since they, it was a show to me. So if you take like, level one, that might be a cure to the cost, there were additional costs to begin with. You know, it could be heart attack or CPR, defibrillation and everything else that we do charge over and above the current rate, which does not show here. So it is, I, I can see the frustration because that is, that is not a true cost that we're charging now, because there is other fees associated with the base rate. What, what was trying to achieve is that ALS merge at level one is the way it's coded to the billing company. Too bad, I ain't sure what that one's, was for, or what level two's for, so I, I need to re-educate myself to explain that to you. So that one could be oxygen therapy, another could be medication therapy, that level one, that level two could be cardiac therapy where we do the AED and other, other things along, that we have a basic plus, plus cost. And then what was trying to do is impair it, make it easier for the billing company, and it would increase what we would get from insurance companies, Medicaid and Medicare also, if they're billed properly, so, but I, I agree, there's not enough explanation here to, and I, I can't remember what it was, it wasn't explained to me, where you began, where you started this.
So, so with these proposed rates, then, these aren't a base rate that would grow with additional services?
It wouldn't, yeah.
That's an all-encompassing rate for whatever might happen during that round.
Because I think, I agree with what the chief's saying, for example, ALS level one, the definition would be cardiac monitor, defibrill, which is fine, and the next one might be more of the level two, so more expertise added, which, that's probably how the insurance billing's gonna ask, and that's why the billing company takes care of that, saves you guys all the heartache, which, one, two, three, you get charged for that. My question is, where did the numbers, the extra charge come to? That's what I'm trying to get to, is, I have no problem with, they do extra service, more CPR, it should be a different level of thing, but our base is 750, so what is added when they use the defibrillator? If they do IV, that's what I'm trying to get is...
Yeah, there's not, there's not enough explanation there, so who could add that? I just got back, it was already on the agenda, so I didn't even have time to gather that information.
So maybe...
But, but for example, is, the present wage that we're billing, so we, let's say we did 750 and we had, this, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, we had 250 for CPR and everything else we have to do with, with that in my view. Okay, the insurance company is more than likely not gonna pay that, but if you group it into the level one or level two, they will pay that. That was, that was the main justification for changing the base in this manner. It wasn't really trying to make more money, at the same time, it hasn't been raised for a while, there was a little attitude.
So maybe do we need to table this until we can...
And like I say, I, this is ongoing, it's, it's gonna be sponsored, pulled, sponsored, and I, you know, especially after what happened, I mean, I have not this piece right now to explain everything to everyone in the line address here.
Should be happy to fit it with you.
Yeah. I feel like, I'm, I'm a person in the office, and you know, I should be more prepared than I should have to kind of do that.
Well, and I, I agree for the issue too, that if we don't, if we aren't consistently looking at our rates for everything, and we just let them go for years on end, when we do have to bring them up, it is an unpleasant shock to the public.
It's, it's still different to the utility rates, if you, you gotta keep up with times.
So rather than doing, you know, big ones, we should probably do a better job of keeping up on...
Especially if we want...
Year to year reviewing our, our fees, to make sure that we're not having to make huge jumps, but, and I agree, I see what you're saying here, Russ, with about how we bill stuff, and it's not necessarily even charging more, it's just making the billing easier, but, yeah.
But there's, there was a lot of research done with it, worked, worked hand in hand, certainly to, to more understand why we had to do this type of rate system. And like I say, if you think that we're jumping too much on, on some of this, we can adjust it, but the justification wasn't just to raise 750 to 1325, there was other, other things encompassed to get, get to that level.
So we can table this and have it come back for some improvement?
Yeah.
Because I don't know, when we go down south by Landville, when you guys go down to Landville, the, the hospital, who gets charged for that time?
No, nobody does. We, we, we've, we've done this, to just keep the public safe or, sometimes any folks.
Well, yeah, which I understand, that's, that's fine, you know. And then I want everybody to remember, no matter what we do in this, they come down with all justification of rates, all that's all great for me, but you all gotta remember, whatever we come up with, the county's gonna get 27% right off the top, right now. So they can raise the rates all they want, the county's gonna get 27% because of what's happened in the past, we, we're stuck with this. You know, so, keep that in mind, you know, so everybody thinks we're gonna have this big flow of money coming in, county, they're back there, sound asleep, city's paying the money when they're sleeping, so keep that in mind when you knock the cost.
I, I'll entertain a motion on this item regarding...
I'll move to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this to order. Item six, councilwoman, meet your discussion for possible action, approval of resolution 2020 dash four, a resolution to amend the city's Ely fire department stipends rates. I know there's been quite a bit of work on this, and by Councilman Allworth and other staff members, so if there are no questions for the chief, part of the vote, or part of the motion, I will...
I have one comment. The only feedback I got, interim bar chief, Pat took this to the volunteers, during one of the regular meetings, there was no heartburn over any of it, they understood a lot of it. The only one was, it was brought up by Burton Milton, earlier yesterday, the stipend will be forfeited, the reports are not completed within 24 hours of the run. One of the volunteers had a, he said, man, that's tough, had to call 3:00 in the morning, you know, because I gotta go to work, so that was brought up, but that was recommended because we will not get the stipends or the paper turned in on the front matter to do that, so I told Burton that was no comment coming out of the volunteer ring.
Would 48 hours be better, or what, what would their suggestion be?
It's been a, one, one guy's, man, that's tough, going out at 2:00 in the morning.
Right, okay, so it's...
On the other end, if you stay there, you're already up, you're red up, you're going, those are the knocks out.
Sure, but as someone who's done it, what seems reasonable to you?
It is, I heard them on, I remember.
And I, you know, I think 48 hours was, was right, and then that could be adjusted with, we could have a caveat on it in certain, I don't know, I've worded it, in certain times, that you, that you feel that I can be extended with permission from staff or something like that.
I think we should go with, try this one more, because...
But I, but I believe, and don't, I can't really quote it, not really, I'm choosing the same, but, but I believe the state has a requirement also on, on recording properly.
But you're not sure what that is?
Yeah, you should have that. I'd say try the 24 hours, if it don't work, let them go back to the change. Actually, we can, we can add radio or can we not?
You could add, whoever makes the motion could add the, the change.
And, and, well, that makes, let me just, just say, uh... You know, you know, or the minimum, with possible extension due to certain circumstances.
With the possible...
48 hours.
With approval by the chief.
With approval by the...
Yeah, with, 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 by staff, assistant staff.
Staff would be okay.
I'm not always there.
Well, I, I'll...
Would, would that be okay?
I will entertain a motion with that adjustment.
I would move to approve with that adjustment.
Are we clear on what that adjustment was?
So, start to move forward, kind of, before quick, not included with the 24 hours of the run, unless the extension is granted by the fire department staff.
I think we should, we should, I'm seeing 48 hours.
That, that would be...
Or would you?
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
That goes into the, the staff.
Right?
And we don't, we don't have to wait on that, we may as well.
With that, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to public comments. To station a new record, you will have...
Right? And we don't, we don't have to wait on that, we may as well.
With that, thank you, Ross. And we'll move on to public comment. To station into the record, you will have three minutes. Public comment, anybody?
I thought Ross was going to speak his...
Ross has spoken enough today.
Oh, I didn't think you would speak.
Mr. Mayor, you passed that task, and I think then I wanted to bring this, all means settled, the amount collected, we made the agreement, and then it was made. The city is selecting the enforcement organs to develop a color of law, you've got to get everybody, everybody, people in the borough, it's not happening. Mr. Mayor, your building inspectors get to address deficiencies on the dealey job on my building at five-seventy Almond, it still has leaks in the brick that was moved, the back of the building is yet to be replaced. Your building inspector signed off the project, then they're telling me I hired a poor contractor. If it was that poor, you should have never started. Your building inspector should have caught that. I paid for protection, and I want that protection. Mr. Mayor, recently, there was an article in the newspaper, I wonder if the building inspectors submit any concerns in, in writing, regarding the middle school, the old high school, I've not seen any.